The meeting to order, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Just for those of us that are here at this table, we understand that we moved the typical time of the second meeting in July. We normally do that at noon on, well, would be the 23rd this year, but with the agenda items being very important, we wanted to make sure that we had every opportunity for anyone from the public to be here and watch what we're doing, comment as necessary, so we moved it to 5:30 to convenience the public. So we'll move forward with the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held July 9th, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. We have two persons wishing to address the board on non-agenda topics. You will have five minutes each, and we'll start out with Scott Ershman. And if you would, when you get to the microphone, please give us your name and your address.
Scott Ershman, 806 South 10th Avenue. I want to talk a little bit about, there's a lot of things on the agenda tonight, so I want to just, in general, talk about transparency. I've been watching the task force and all this stuff play out. I've been very disappointed, a lot of stuff has been left out and not, information not given to the public. Take, for instance, this meeting tonight. According to state law, you're supposed to do a 24-hour notice of a meeting. That's business days, that doesn't count Saturdays and Sundays. This meeting should have been posted on Friday, 5 o'clock. It was posted Sunday morning. I didn't realize that IT person and your communications person works on Sundays. Kind of surprised me. Let's talk about conflicts of interest. Several task force members have conflicts. Another thing is, when people bond for things, for instance, when the city bonded for the event center, they told us what the final payoff would be, $180 million. It seems no one, with all these extensive studies, knowing that it's a 4% bond and 30-year length, nobody seems to know the payoff amount. Or maybe they know it, but they're not telling us. I'm guessing it's going to be well north of $300 million, but we still haven't heard that number yet. The survey was sent, postcard was sent out to 83,000 residents. That means it was sent to residents, it was not sent to voters. Voters are who are going to vote for this. Residents, unless they register to vote. I thought that was silly, that you can base your survey on people who probably aren't, some of them aren't even registered to vote. So that was odd, that you would send a survey to non-registered voters, unless something I don't know about. Another question that's been brought up is, how are we going to fund $190 million worth of schools? Nobody knows, nobody has a plan. First, we build them, and then we'll figure that out later. That's disappointing. We don't know who's tabulating the votes, we don't know who's running the absentee votes, we don't know, are we using super precincts? We know that the e-poll books that were developed by Heart Interactive, they no longer support them. B-Pro tried to support them in the primaries, and they failed hugely. And the Secretary of State says she will not allow e-poll books. So I'm confused, if we use super precincts, where, who's going to service these e-poll And like I said, B-Pro for that. I think, I support building new schools, I really do. I believe education is an investment in our community. But I'm also big on transparency, and you've got to tell the public what this is going to cost them. You've got to tell the public how we're going to vote. You've got to tell the public, you've got to get them to the vote, and you've got to, you've got to talk to people who vote. I have no idea how you think you could get a 60% passage on this in a special election when you haven't given the public anything. The $2, $2 a month thing is for the first year. Once your house goes up in value, that compounds each year after that. That hasn't been told to the public. Some people think, "Well, I'm just going to pay $2 extra a month for 30 years." No, that's not how it works. There needs to be a lot more transparency and honesty around this. I'm disappointed. It's probably going to fail, I'm just going to say that, as a person who's watched these elections in this city long enough. I mean, the event center, which was hugely popular and half the price, passed only by 54%, you have to get 60% on $300 million in bonds. I just wish this would have been handled differently, and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Judy Meters?
Judy Meters, and I live in the Whittier area, 513 North French. I guess what Scott said really kind of says it all. We definitely need transparency, and we aren't seeing it here, we don't see it down at the council meetings, although it's getting better. I've lived in the Whittier area for 40-some years. My kids went to elementary school at Franklin, they went to Whittier when it was junior high, and now it's middle school. I guess, as, you know, a retired middle-aged taxpayer, I kind of feel that we need to know what this school is going to cost. All we're hearing is what the land is going to cost. I find it really hard to believe that there isn't a blueprint out there for this school, because they've already said, "It will not be like the school that, you know, like we have the George McGovern, the latest middle schools." So if they know it's not going to be like that blueprint, somebody has an idea somewhere of what this school is going to be. And in my way of thinking, which maybe I'm way off-base, I feel that this will be the latest and the greatest new middle school in the largest city in South Dakota. So you know it's going to be nice. And I'm not against education, but there's a lot of people, you know, if they're talking 30-some to 40-some houses that will be torn down, there's a lot of retired people that, where are they going to go? You know, that's, I guess that's my question. You know, and once that land is bought, how much time will we have to find another place to live? And will those houses be demolished right away? Or will they be rented out for a couple of years before this all takes place? You know, in 10 years, I feel we're going to have, which we need. We need a new elementary school, we need a new middle school, we need a new high school, and I'm all for that. But I think there needs to be a little bit of conservative money that goes into this, these new schools. I'm sorry. From what I've seen, I don't see that happening. You know, I'm just asking for a little, you know, time maybe to really delve into it and see if we need to have all that money spent. Is there a way we could cut and not hurt the education and still leave some of these homes? I appreciate everyone's work, and I hope that things can work out. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on. May I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. And we do have some conflicts of interest on the agenda. If I can have a motion to approve those, please.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. May I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Supplemental consent agenda, items A, 1 and 2, Claims to Sanford Health, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries with two abstentions, Board Member Mickelson and Board Member Ryder. And we are on to reports of the Superintendent, Dr. Maher.
Thank you, President Alberti. We have our first report tonight, is the Advanced Placement Program Report. Delivering that report will be our Director of Curriculum Services, Ann Smith.
The Advanced Placement, or AP, program is available to high school students interested in college preparatory coursework that is academically rigorous and rich in content. Students are encouraged to take at least one AP course during their high school career. In the 2017-18 school year, 1,351 students took AP exams. This is an increase from 1,340 students taking AP exams in 2016-17. Many students enroll in more than one AP course. In 2017-18, there were a total of 2,547 AP exams taken. Again, this number is up from 2016-17, when there were 2,439 exams taken. Over the past five years, the number of exams taken by minority students has increased. One of the district's goals is to ensure that there is equitable access to highly effective The AP exams are scored on a scale of 1 to 5, with a 3 considered passing. Students are not required to take the AP exam, but students are strongly encouraged to do so. In 2017-18, 91% of students who took an AP course took the AP exam. 71.3% of those students scored a 3 or higher. The Sioux Falls School District students continue to outperform their state and global peers on the AP exams. As you can see by this chart showing that statewide, 69% of students scored a 3 or higher, while in the Sioux Falls School District, 71.3% did so. The College Board honored 433 of our students this year for their excellent achievement in the AP program. 191 received the AP Scholar Award, which is given to students who score a 3 or higher on three or more exams. The 72 students who received AP Scholar Honor, AP Scholar Award with Honors distinction, averaged a 3.25 or higher on all of the AP exams they took, with a score of 3 or higher on four or more exams. 144 students received the AP Scholar with distinction, which means that they earned an average of 3.5 on all exams, and a score of 3 or higher on five or more exams. And finally, the highest award, the AP National Scholar Award, was given to 26 students who are recognized for having an average of 4 on all AP exams taken, and a score of 4 or higher on eight or more exams. There's a cost of $93 per exam, and students who qualify for financial, qualify according to the guidelines of the State Department of Education and the College Board, receive financial aid. This year, 256 tests qualified for fee reduction through the College Board. I would ask that the Board acknowledge the results from the district's 2018 Advanced Placement Report.
Any questions for Ann?
I just want to commend the students and the teachers on this, because as you see, we've improved, and, you know, a fear of people was that with this later start, we might see a big decrease, which looks just like maybe that first year we did, but the next two years, they rose to the occasion and worked hard and got it done, so thank you to all of them.
If you'll allow me to make a comment.
Certainly.
You know, one of the things that went through pretty quickly there, part of the strategic plan is to have a more robust participation in AP courses, but also when we drill down by categories of students, it's to increase the number of students of color taking AP exams. And while we went through that pretty quickly, I'll just highlight a couple of things. Number one, one group that was down slightly was our American Indian group. A small number to begin with, of American Indian students taking the AP exam, but it's gone down, and something that certainly we need to address. But when I look at our Asian student population, it's up. When I look at our Black student population, it's up, and if you look at it over two years, it's up over 30%. When I look at our Hispanic population, it's increased by 30% in one year, and over 40% over two years. And for those students who are two or more races, that number is up nearly 15% in one year, and has doubled in two years. So we're well on the way. I'm really impressed with the AP program overall, and it was a highlight of this district long before I got here, so I can't take any credit for this. But what I'm really pleased to see is, when I look at students of color, their participation rate, we're improving significantly, and hopefully we can continue that trend line.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, may I have a motion to acknowledge the results of the AP report, please?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion?
I think the, exactly what you highlighted, Dr. Maher, the efforts that we've made over the last couple of years to increase the diversity of the students taking the exams is, you know, testament to all the hard work that's been going on in our schools, so it's great news.
Thank you, Ann. We have a motion and second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you. Dr. Maher.
Our second report tonight is a public hearing, a public hearing on the waiver's request for exemption of administrative rules concerning plans of intent and special educational alternative certification. Here to conduct that hearing is Becky Dorman, our Senior Director of Human Resources.
Thank you, and good evening. I come forward tonight to request the district to apply for waivers toward two administrative rules. The first administrative rule is the plan of intent rule. When a teacher is on a plan of intent, that means he or she has a teaching certificate, but they may lack the endorsement for the subject that they're teaching. The state of South Dakota gives a teacher two years to get their endorsement. Sometimes that endorsement is as simple, and I put that in quotation marks, because I've never actually taken a Praxis test, but you take a test, and you now are, you've shown your content knowledge, you are now certified. But in some cases, we have teachers that are pursuing additional endorsements, like special education. And sometimes they go even further than just getting the coursework for the endorsement and decide to get their Masters in Special Education. So a two-year window is very tight. So we have about eight teachers that are so close and are making progress on their endorsement in special education, that they need just this additional year, which the state does provide for us, as long as we go through this waiver process. And then we have one additional teacher that needs to take the Technology Education exam, and it was recommended to her by the state of education that she apply for a waiver, because the test that is coming out a little bit later this fall is more relevant and applicable to the subject matter that she's teaching. All of our teachers that are not currently endorsed in the areas that they're teaching receive additional support from instructional coaches, either in regular ed or special education, and then they also have mentors right there at school that help support them. Are there any questions? Thank you. I ask that you acknowledge the public hearing and authorize administration to proceed with the applications for waivers from administrative rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Can we do both, the public hearings for both waivers at the same time? Okay. We'll now open it up as public hearing, if there is anyone here that would like to address the board regarding those waivers. If not, the public hearing portion is closed, and if I could get a motion to acknowledge the public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign, that motion carries. On to the third report.
Okay, I'll begin the next report from the other side of the podium.
All right.
A slightly different view for me here. It's a pleasure to be in front of you here tonight. While it, tonight will potentially kick off a series of events that are important to our community, it's also somewhat of an ending to really a long journey at this point. So let me recap the process of the district thus far, getting us to the point where tonight we consider putting together a bond referendum for our community. If you recall, we started on a strategic plan, really beginning with my initiation into the district in the fall of 2015, putting together a strategic plan and identified four areas within that strategic plan. Student outcomes, school climate, staff, and community engagement. And part of that community engagement piece in that strategic plan is addressing the increasing enrollment that we have in our school district. The Board approved that strategic plan ultimately in February of 2017, and we set together in that plan a facilities timeline for 2020. One of the things that we did, as you know, that strategic plan is something that we look at annually, and we move things around in there as the need arises. Well, based on enrollment increases, we moved that topic up and moved it along a little faster than what we had originally intended. So you've seen this a number of times, and that is the facilities process and how it was outlined. Phase one was to learn about our issue, phase two was to gather feedback through the issue, phase three was develop options, to develop options, phase four is the Board decision, and that's where we are tonight, and then phase five ultimately is action. Let me talk just a little bit about each one of those. The learning, the first phase of this process was looking at the collected enrollment information. We toured buildings and determined the needs in fall of 2017, so a year ago. And as you well know, you've seen these numbers many, many, many times. Since the fall of 1990, our enrollment has increased by over 8,800 students, or an increase of 58% from that point in time. We also are projecting that in the next five years, by 2023, we'll increase by another 1,000 students to get us to a 25,000-student K through 12 enrollment. So one of the things we also had to do was say, "Well, what does that mean to our existing facilities?" A chart that you've seen, and while some of those in the audience may look at that and say, "Well, what does that mean?", really what we've done is we've lumped our schools into elementary schools on the far left, middle schools in the middle of that graph, and then our high schools are on the right. The red line, the red horizontal line indicates capacity at each building. If you'll look at the elementary schools, the blue lines indicate that those buildings are at or beyond capacity. Well, what that tells me is that in all but four of our elementary schools, we are at or beyond capacity. If we perform that same exercise at our middle schools, we see that four out of our five middle schools are over capacity, with George McGovern still having room to grow in its current state. And then at the high school level, Washington, Roosevelt, and Lincoln are all beyond their capacity, with New Tech High School still having room to grow as our project-based learning high school in the, in the school district. So how we arrived where we are, we had three community engagement sessions, we had two staff sessions, and we had all of those in the spring of 2018, so just a few months ago. From all that volume of information, we put together a task force, a 30-member task force, and had that task force engage in four meetings. Two of those meetings were in April, two of those meetings were in May. That's really quick to talk about, and that was a whole lot of engagement in really trying to figure out, what is the community telling us? Not what are we telling the community, but what is the community telling us about potential solutions? So that was the second phase, gathering of feedback. The third phase was developing of options, and as you well know, that took place from the task force that met four times in April and May, and came to you with a set of recommendations in June of 2018. The short version of what those recommendations are is $190 million worth of solution. Those solutions are, they include a new high school, they include a new middle school, they include a new elementary school, and it also includes safety, ADA, and equity needs across our district. By the way, the $190 million, if you're wondering, how do I equate that? I always like to figure out, what does it mean to me personally? The $190 million bond referendum would be analogous to you trying to figure out, what sort of mortgage do I need to buy for my home? If I'm buying a 15-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage, how much am I going to purchase in that mortgage? And that's what the $190 million bond referendum is. That says, for a $190 million loan, we can have this as our solution. So the cost to taxpayers, we tried a number of different ways to figure out, the best way to figure out how to be transparent to the taxpayers and say, "This is what it will cost you." If you look at that first line, the cost to taxpayers is $2 a month on a $185,000 home. The $185,000 home is the median-priced home in the city of Sioux Falls. As you well know, that means half of the homes in Sioux Falls have a larger value than $185,000, half of the homes in Sioux Falls have a value less than $185,000. We achieved that $2 per month cost by looking at a reduction in the capital outlay levy. Also, when we do a comparison for surrounding districts, those contiguous to us and those very near us, we include ourselves in those 11 districts. With the increase, we would be 11th out of, or we would be 10th out of those 11 districts. That is, if they don't increase. There's the potential for us to still be 11th out of 11 for our neighboring districts yet. We conducted a community survey to help inform the process as another way to engage the community, to provide feedback, and to help say, "Does this solution make sense?" And you can certainly talk about the scientific nature of the survey, but I think it was information that really helped inform the process and helped inform the potential solution. And then, as you all remember, on June 27th, we had a work session to say, "Here's how this looks, here's how this lays out, here are the next steps." That brings us to today, where you are tonight, to make what I would term a historic decision for the future of the school district, and whether or not you enter into, given affirmative vote on the resolution that's in front of you. Ultimately, then, that resolution will be to issue $190 million in general obligation bonds, and to set an election day for September 18th of 2018. You haven't come to this spot quickly. It's taken 18 months, and if you look at the strategic plan, you could say it's taken a lot longer than that. And some of you are probably saying, "Mr. Superintendent, would you get going?" But here we are tonight, and I think we've got here in a very deliberate fashion, I think we've got here in a very transparent fashion, in order to bring a little more... And in order to bring a little more light to the issue, I'm going to ask our Director of Research, Innovation, and Accountability, Doug Morrison, to come up and provide a little more clarity to the issue.
I think Dr. Maher did a great job of summing up the process and where we've been and the solution. And so on your executive summary, we really dropped down to below where we were showing the results from the survey to kind of get the crux of what the mechanics of the, what has to be approved tonight. And so I would just start off by saying, the process to build new schools is lengthy, and time is of the essence to accommodate the growing enrollment that currently resides in the district. So a lot of this isn't futuristic. It's the, you look at the middle school and high school future projections of our K through two or K through three class, and it's already in our district and coming up. So time is of the essence that we get moving on this. The annual school district levies are due to the county auditor at the end of September each year. So in order to issue bonds to move forward with the design and construction of the facilities and submit to the county auditor by September 18th, it would mean that an election would have to be held prior to that date. Setting an election date of September 18th would require that the school board act tonight on July 23rd, and approval of the attached resolution, which you have in your packet, which is Exhibit Two, would have to be approved tonight to set the election date as Tuesday, September 18th. And so, and so I would call your attention to the exhibits that you have. Exhibit one was, is a very detailed list of what is going to propose to be made up of the $190 million in bond proceeds. So this was a list that originally was prioritized by the task force. And then in your work session, you took this list and you made some modifications to it as what you felt were the priorities based on feedback from Mr. Kreider and his team and others. And so this is the list that we bring you tonight, which, again, totals $190 million. Again, most of these projections are based on very concrete projections of what's been built in the past in the district and other research that Mr. Kreider and his team has done. And so very firm numbers on exactly what this will get us, and also taking into account some element of inflation that we know will be coming down the road, knowing that much of the construction will take place in two, three, four years out. So we have to account for that. Exhibit two, again, is the actual resolution that was provided to us and with the help of our bond counsel, Mr. Todd Meyer Henry. And so I would also call your attention to Exhibit Three, which is a timeline of certain things that have to happen by statute. And so Exhibit Three, setting an election date of September 18th, that would mean that the deadline for voter registration would be September 4th. So anyone who wants to vote has till then to register. It would also mean that absentee ballot voting would have to be available by August 31st. I think the intention is to try to do better than that and probably try to coincide it earlier, maybe with the start of school, and expand that absentee voting window as long as we can to make it convenient for people to vote. And then there's some other deadlines throughout there as far as campaign reports that are due and whatnot. And then finally, on Exhibit Four, is the actual sample ballot. That would be, this is how it would look to the voters on September 18th or in their absentee vote when they came in and voted. You can see the language there. It's a simple yes or no vote. And so I would call then your attention back to the resolution, which is what you would be required to act on tonight if you wanted to have a vote on September 18th. And the resolution just goes through, again, the actual ballot language, which is somewhat more summarized in nature than calling out every specific things that's going to happen to every school. I think there's 20-some facilities that will be impacted across the district, either from an equity standpoint, a safety standpoint, an ADA standpoint. So a very large footprint across the district. However, I think providing the list along with this sort of narrows in on exactly what the $190 million is going to be spent on in a priority fashion. And then there's some other things in the resolution that are required by law, again, voter registration deadlines, notice of election, canvassing, hiring of professionals, and things of that nature. So I think that's all the mechanics at this point that sort of bring you to this point and discussion amongst yourselves. And I think we can stand by and answer any questions specific to whatever needs you might have to make your decision.
Thank you, Doug. I do have two gentlemen that have signed up to talk about the issue. I think now would be the best time to have them come up. We'll start with Matt Ditmanson. If you would come up and give us your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Matt Ditmanson, 6208 South Audi Drive here in Sioux Falls. And I come to you in favor of your support for this initiative. I come to you as a parent of two daughters that attended Sioux Falls Public School District, as well as two granddaughters that I hope to come to the school district as well. And so this vote is about our kids. It's about our future and the development, providing that access to education. And so I offer you that encouragement for a vote in favor of this. I also come to you in favor, on behalf of Sanford, as you know, of a land donation for this initiative in excess of $3 million market value for that land. And so we too greatly appreciate the work Dr. Maher has done, the task force, the due diligence and the transparency that I've seen as a taxpayer in this community. I think this is the right thing to do for our kids and encourage your vote for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Vernon Brown.
Thank you, Ken. Vernon Brown, 1220 South Phillips Avenue. I just want to thank you for your transparency. This has been a long process. I know you've been at it for 18 months, and you've done it with an altruistic goal, providing the space we need to effectively have our students in this city learn. So thank you for that. You engaged the community in three large meetings, more than 65 people attending each of those meetings, filling out lots of words on comment cards. So you listened and did your work. You know, there's lots of focus on the new high school, the middle school, and the elementary, the land for Whittier. You know, the task force by design did not identify the specific properties, not even for the new facilities. That has to be determined yet after this vote. And as an advocate for the core neighborhoods, I'm really excited for the future of Whittier neighborhood. What an opportunity we'll have someday to put a new middle school in the neighborhood to revitalize it and make it better than it is even today. But I'm also excited about what Doug touched on, the $40 million improvements to a majority of your buildings, addressing ADA, but especially security. Those are noble goals for you to tackle. They're not fun and exciting to spend money on, but I think every parent who sends children to the public schools wants you to do those things as well. Those aren't as exciting to see get done as a new building, but incredibly important to the district. So thank you for your hard work on this. Thank you on behalf of the task force, and let's go on. I'm ready, Dr. Maher. Let's move it forward.
Thank you. All right. I think we are at the point where we need a motion for the resolution so that we can have some further discussion among the board. So if I can get a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And discussion. We do have Todd Meyer Henry here. If we have specific questions on the bonding, should the election be successful or when the election is successful? So if we have specific questions on that, Todd's available here to answer those for us.
I was just going to ask Business Manager Beek if he would just comment on some of the history of the bonds that we've had in the district. When was the last time that we had one? What was the end result of that? Just, I think that speaks to what we have historically done and the decisions that we've made. So since you've been here and been through some of that, if you wouldn't mind sharing a little bit of that?
Sure. The last bond that passed was in 1997. It was part of a big CIP plan. It was $31 million, I believe. It was a 25-year bond. It, the pledge made by the school board at the time was that they would lower the capital outlay levy to offset the bond cost, and they'd do that for at least five years. We did it for every year up until 2015. We actually lowered it by 10 cents. I wasn't here in '97, and neither were anybody at this table, or some over there were, but when that, when that promise was made. But the board kept it. Not only kept it, they lowered it by 10 cents as we went throughout the years. And then in 2015, we paid the bond off early, defused it. So that, the promise was kept all throughout the bond.
Thank you.
Other questions, discussion?
I, with the Exhibit One in today's, where it just has the big-ticket listing of like the new high school, new middle school, new elementary. At our district work session, we actually had breakdowns of what those big costs were, which I believe we post those on the district website as well. Because I know there was a question of what, and so when people, if people want to go see what the breakdown of what those items are, they're, it is on the website for the three big school, new schools on there.
I'm just gonna say that I'm one board member that's gonna be definitely in favor of this, just for the fact, we've done a lot of work. It's been a long 18 months. It's been a productive 18 months. It was fun to have the public hearings. It was great to hear people. It was great to see the task force work. I know that we've worked really hard, and I'm disappointed if there's some people that don't, don't think that we have done our due diligence. But I'm really proud of what we've done thus far, and I'm excited to see us move forward.
Any other discussion questions?
I feel like we've been, you know, as we've said, we've been talking about this for a long time. So it seems sort of like we don't have much to say anymore because we've said it already. But I think that this is the right thing for our district. We are a growing city, and we need to, we need to make sure that the children of our city have every opportunity, and that's going to mean more facilities to make sure that those kids have a place to be educated, so.
Thank you. And I would like to reiterate, we have had a transparent process. We have spent considerable time with this process, and I believe that we have been as open and honest and transparent with it as possible. I also want to specifically address that our notification for tonight's board meeting was in compliance with state law, is in compliance with state law. And I see Mr. Meyer Henry nodding his head in affirmation of that statement. So there should be no question that notice was given appropriately, that was given legally, and the action that we will take tonight will stand because we have gone through the appropriate process. So further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second for the resolution. I will ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you very much. And I believe that brings us to the end of the agenda. Has anyone got anything else to come before the body? If not, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.